Please stand for the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which its lands, one nation, honor God, individual, liberty, and justice for all.
Rope?
Ryan Cassoon.
President.
Tobin.
Here.
Kleiner.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Jean Francois.
Here.
Burr.
Here.
Green.
Here.
Massey. President Rodriguez.
Here.
Orham is present.
Approval minutes?
We have the common council meeting minutes of November 16th, 2021.
Resolutions by Alderman Jean Francois, seconded by Alderman Green. All in favor?
Aye.
Correspondents?
None this evening.
For the good of the city, anyone who would like to address the council, please step forward.
Good evening, everyone. Happy holidays. I'm Leilani Lockett. I am a Middletown resident, and I also work for Power Against Tobacco. Unfortunately, I was quarantined with my kids on the last meeting. I would rather have been here, trust me. Schoolwork at home is not fun. But I just wanted to thank the council for the consideration of adding vaping and cannabis to your smoke-free policy for the city of Middletown. We know that young people are affected by especially vaping right now. It's getting rampant in the high schools and middle schools, and we want to make sure that our parks and our playgrounds and our recreational spaces are safe for families to enjoy without inhaling tobacco or cannabis or whatever is going around. So I'm just here as a free resource through the New York State Department of Health, Bureau of Tobacco Control Program. We have free signage. I've spoken to Ray Lynn, and we're going to work to get those signs up and out. And just thank you again. If you need any assistance or support, we're here. Any businesses that want to go smoke-free, vape-free, we can also assist with that.
We're going to need a lot of signs. Fifty-seven locations.
Fifty-seven? Okay, we're on it. Thank you, everyone. Have a great night and happy holidays.
Anyone else who would like to address the council? This time, I'd like to call Ray Lynn up. And the Parks Committee. Commissioners?
Good evening, everyone. On behalf of the Middletown Recreation Department and the Middletown Recreation Commission and former Superintendent Christine Brinkerhoff, we'd like to present Mr. Tom Burr with the 2021 Distinguished Service Award. This is in recognition of outstanding service to the betterment of the quality of life in the city of Middletown. Thank you, Mr. Burr.
And just really quick, I had the privilege of working with Mr. Burr, obviously my, almost my whole entire career at Middletown. A sounding board kept you level. You could run into his store any day for help. You could call him any day. He's going to be missed. We know he bleeds blue. What's nice is he's going to be in the same situation. I got the leave and a competent person behind me, and we know you got a real good guy that bleeds blue coming in behind you, too. So best of luck to you, and thank you for all of your service. I greatly appreciated it.
And again, on behalf of the Recreation Commission and the Recreation Department, we do thank you, and all the lifeguards who ran over and got some sandwiches every summer, they thank you as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Nice. Okay, reports of department heads. Economic Development?
Good evening, everyone. Congratulations, Alderman Burr, and thank you for all your help with my department over the years and all your support. Thank you for everything. Just a couple items tonight, just to update. Community Development Agency, we closed on the Pine Street property on Friday, so we have another happy homeowner in our community, and she's moving in. And we are working on another home, hopefully that will be completed in January, February. And coming to the Paramount tomorrow, The Matrix, the new Matrix movie. So that's a first-run movie, opening tomorrow, so we're excited about that. And I just want to wish everybody Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year, and that's all I have.
Any question for Maria? Thank you, Maria.
Thank you.
DPW Commissioner?
Good evening, all. We start off with Alderman Burr. I mean, Tom, I've said quite a bit of things about you last meeting, so you'll be dearly missed from the city. You've been honorable and gentleman and been there for everyone throughout your career, the many years I worked with you. You've been always there and ready to help with open mind and open heart to do what's best for the city of Middletown, and for that, I'm very grateful. It's been great working with you. Alderman Massey is not here, but he sent me a text. He said, Jacob, please don't forget to update the residents. He did. Update the residents about the reservoir, the volume of the reservoir, and I promised him I will. So our reservoir is right now about at ninety, ninety-six and a half percent full. This year, we had sixty inches of rain so far. Sixty inches is tremendous amount of rain compared to around just under forty or around forty that we have on normal year. Over the past twenty years, the only year that was higher than this year is back in 2011 when we had Hurricane Irene and Lee. We had seventeen inches of rain that year. Unfortunately, this month, it's relatively dry. Our street department and the snow plowing, they're very happy about this, but our reservoirs are not very happy about this. We need the rain and we need the water. So that is why, in spite of the huge amount of rain that we had throughout the year, our reservoirs are relatively, I mean, it's minor, ninety, ninety-six and a half percent capacity. And that is because our volume is very, storage volume is very limited, so we need a continuous amount of rain. So if it rains too hard in a short period of time or throughout the year, and then it stops raining, and then we have a dry period, our reservoirs, the water level will start depleting. That's the nature of the beast, and we are looking for additional water resources, but we have, for now, we have plenty for what we need to meet our demand. So that's one thing. Now, with the holidays coming, the mayor has advice from before, and the council president and the common council, that we're going to have an additional cart for Thanksgiving and for holidays, meaning for garbage pickup, for municipal solid waste or garbage pickup, meaning the Monday after Christmas, which is going to be the Fourth Ward in the morning, you can have, you can use the blue if you have extra garbage to dispose of. You don't have to only just fill out the green. You can use also the recyclable blue cart to fill your municipal solid waste. And we'll do that for all of the week after Christmas, which is the follow, you know, next week. So we'll start Monday, Fourth Ward, Third, Fourth Ward, Second Ward, Third Ward, and First Ward. And is it Fourth?
Yes.
Second, yeah, I got it. Thank you. So that being said, please keep the garbage cans as much as close as possible to the curb, away from any parked cars. And, you know, I know the cars have not been parked now because overnight, but now the city is going to relax it. The chief will be addressing that. They're going to relax the parking because the weather is cooperating, so it's going to be more hardship in our sanitation department, but we'll handle it. Just try to keep it away from cars or gas meters. There was an incident, one cart, garbage, this morning, as a matter of fact, was very close to a gas meter, and the arm went to grab it, to grab the garbage can and grabbed the gas meter as well. So it was quite a scene, quite an incident. Everybody's safe, thank God, and everything worked out well, but you know, that's, it goes to say, it goes to show how critical the operation is of these arms and to try to work with us, to put them in a place where you expect the truck to safely pick up that garbage can and move it. So if you have an Excel, today, we had like two water main breaks and one fire hydrant we had to replace. So you know, the water department was really, I usually don't call on them that much, but they are there for us, the water department, under Brian Smith and Deputy Commissioner, and they are working very hard, and especially in a day like this. They fixed two water main breaks, and they replaced the fire hydrant. And those are emergencies. And also, that goes to show the age of our, the aging system that we have for our infrastructure, water system, sewer system, and the need to continue to invest in it and to replace it and to upgrade it. Talking about capital projects, I'm not going to go too far, but tomorrow, West Main Street, at the end of the day, it will be open for traffic. So the bridge is completed, and that is under New York Rising. We had, just a reminder, we had three and a half million dollars of grant, basically money, free money from the state, to do two projects. One of them is West Main, replace the bridge on West Main by the entrance of the city, and the other one is Grand Street to replace an aging culvert that has collapsed on Grand Street. Both of them, the two projects, are very successful. They'll be completed this year, and we had some extra money in there, so we went back and we invested the money in additional curbs and sidewalks, in both Grand Street, that will be done on Grand Street and hasn't been done yet, and on Maple, and West Main Street up to Maple Avenue. So both of them are very successful. I'm not going to report to you anymore on the capital projects, but I want to wish everybody Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays, and all the best for next year.
Thank you, Jacob. Any question for Jacob? Jacob, I have two things. The 24th and the 31st recycling schedule, what would it fall under? Will we still pick it up on the 24th and the 31st?
Twenty-fourth, yeah. Twenty-fourth will be picked up, and 31st?
It's Friday also.
Yeah, Friday, I'm going to look at the schedule. We'll send an Excel out, but probably it's going to be pushed over for the following, for the first, but yeah, let me check on that. I'll send an Excel out.
Okay, and then streetlights. Had people call me about streetlights? We used to, Orange Rockland used to own them?
Yeah.
They can't call Orange Rockland anymore, correct?
That's exactly right. They have to call DPW 343-3169. Any issues with any streetlights because the city now owns the streetlights, and any issues, you have to call us, please, and just tell us where the streetlights are out, and it will be very helpful because most of our guys, they are working during the day. We really don't know what's going on at night. You know, I know the police department, they do some referral for us about streetlights that are out, but we rely mostly on our residents who live throughout the city, and if there's any streetlight that's out, just please call us at DPW 343-3169. There has been some backorder for some of the arms that were closed, were broken, but we are getting more and more supplies now, and we're going to be stocking up too as well so that we can get, be more responsive in the future.
Alderman Kleiner?
Yes, Commissioners, at our constituents' meeting, people asked generally, how are the new garbage trucks working out? Is everything successful, and are we doing the whole city or are there still parts we're not doing?
Yeah, yes. They've been great success, to be honest with you.
Okay.
And whenever there is no parking on the streets, we only allow, we only get the driver to go by themselves, so we save on manpower now. However, when we allow parking on the street in there, then we have to let people, we have to have another loader to go out with them in order to help push the cans over so the arm can grab them, put them in the right place, because before, we were hitting cars and, you know, we're not getting to them. The driver has to get out of the truck, go move the cans over so he can grab them, because they're sitting right behind cars, parked cars. So the parked cars are a big problem for us, and that's why we had to put people on the truck, one person, not two persons, one person to situate them. But now, there's no parking. Now, the drivers, they're going by themselves. Now, the bid district, it has not been converted yet. Some of them have been converted, others have not. And the mayor, he's working on some kind of a schedule in there, an arrangement and a map, and where to, where each building can put their garbage cans or their refuse in the dumpsters. We're constructing new dumpsters. We just added dumpster location at, behind the Paramount by Middletown Press, another one across from De Filippi, and we're adding more centralized locations, so we don't have ten million, ten million carts we have to pick up, and there's no place to put them in the street. And then, once you put them in the street, who's going to pick them up? They sit there all day. So we're trying to minimize the distribution of carts in the bid area so that people will use the dumpsters.
Okay, thank you.
You're very welcome.
Alderman Jean Francois?
It's the only complaint I have for sanitation. The old truck is waking me up every morning. Now, I'm late for work every morning with the new truck.
Yeah, they're very, they're very quiet. That's right. I mean, and fast, too. I mean, you can watch them. If you want to watch them in there, the truck comes in, boom, takes it and keeps going. It's very efficient operation, and it's really working out very well, knock on wood, you know. There are some mishaps every now and then, but we're dealing with them.
All right, Jacob, thank you. Police Chief?
Good evening. I'd like to congratulate Alderman Burr as well. Tom, you've been a great asset to us over my whole career. You've always been there for the police department. I know you're invested in the city, and we'll greatly miss you, and I greatly appreciate everything you've done for us. So thank you and congratulations. As Jacob alluded to, I did have a conversation today with the mayor in regards to suspending overnight parking for the holiday season. So we've agreed that effective Friday, December 24th through Sunday, January 2nd, that we will not be enforcing overnight parking unless there's inclement weather. Just so everybody knows that if we have any type of precipitation that's going to require DPW coming out, we do have to have the cooperation of getting the vehicles off the street, and we will have enforcement efforts in lieu of that as well. So again, Friday, December 24th through January 2nd, no enforcement, overnight parking to help with our residents, allow them to have friends and family over for the holiday season. Other than that, I have nothing except to wish everyone a Merry Christmas and a Happy and Healthy New Year on behalf of the Middletown Police Department.
Any question for Police Chief? Thank you, Chief. Superintendent Recreation?
One last reminder, our winter break camp program is, we're still having registration. There is plenty of room. We're going to close it out Thursday at 4:30 so we can get our staff in order for the camp over that Christmas break. Big thank you to the Middletown Police Department for a very successful Cops and Cookies evening. The kids love decorating the cookies and watching a movie. Thank you to the Middletown Fire Department, Police Department, and the Middletown School District for a very successful holiday parade. We wish the weather was a little better. It was very misty, rainy all day, but we were still out there, had a successful parade. Turnout was a little low because of the weather, but again, thank you to those three departments. And congratulations to the Veltre family who won the Holiday Light Display. Their house is located on Eisenhower. If anyone would like to drive by, they were our winners. And Rick McCormick and Kelly Ocasio did a wonderful job emceeing, and you could check out that video on our YouTube channel. And that is all.
Okay. Alderman Tobin?
I'm not sure if it's Jacob's department of yours, but the Numb and the Lions Club, they noted, people noticed the signs have been coming down on the entryways to the city. Just wondering if they're going to replace them, or do we need to give you new signs or do we get those signs back? Like, you know, the Kiwanis Lions Club?
I think Maria, she's been working with the mayor.
Oh, okay.
About putting all these signs, and she's been reaching out to those individual clubs and... Maria, she's...
They're asking me, so just...
Yeah.
We're putting together criteria like on the size of the sign and that, and then we'll be getting in touch with all the service clubs to put them back on. So there's going to be some kind of criteria, or I don't know if it's an application or such, but we'll be in touch with everybody.
Like a new sign, like a new, it looked like there was something about, it could be refreshed, some of the old...
Yeah, where the new gateways we did on Monhegan and onto North Street by the Globe over there on the corner. I know those areas, they all came, they came down. So there's going to be some, like I said, some criteria on the size of the signs, so we'll be reaching out.
Okay, thank you.
And City Clerk?
Thank you. Just a reminder, the city council's reorganization meeting will take place on January 3rd, beginning at 6:30 in council chambers. And parking, overnight and vacation parking permits, the application is available on the city's website, so be sure to check that out. Thank you.
Any question for the City Clerk? Okay, thank you. Remarks of Alderman. Alderman Tobin?
Just wanted to wish you a very Happy Holidays. Thank you, Burr, for your service and Numbchuck. It's definitely going to be different without you, but I know you'll be here in spirit, and you can tune in and watch us on TV if you miss us.
Alderman Green?
Thank you very much. Yeah, Alderman Burr, it's been an honor and a pleasure to serve with you. I've known you certainly long before I got on the council, but it's been wonderful to have you here and wish you all the best going forward. Of course, a Happy Holidays, a Merry Christmas, Happy New Year to everyone. I just wanted to touch really quickly on something that has kind of been eating at me for a few days with regards to the pandemic and mask mandates and the real question of enforcement and things on that. You know, I go out to the stores just like everyone else when I need to, and when the store has a big sign in front that's in red and says, you know, "To enter, you must wear a mask", I don't expect to go in there and only see sixty percent of the people to be wearing a mask. It's not a joke. It's not made up. You know, the keyboard epidemiologists who I see through Facebook like to say that it's the governor's way of sticking it to them, and they're going to stick it back by not wearing a mask. You know, I don't think that the governor's losing any sleep at night over John Doe from the city of Middletown not wearing a mask inside ShopRite, but I will tell you that I lose sleep at night thinking about my son, who can't be vaccinated, who does actually wear a mask without even being asked to, and doesn't complain. This is his third Christmas, and he has yet to sit on Santa's lap because he can't get vaccinated, and I spent two nights in the ER this year with what would be a simple cold for us, just because his body couldn't handle that. So when you're thinking of sticking it to the governor, please think of who you're actually sticking it to, those who can't fend for themselves right now and the families that are affected by that. Please mask up, be considerate of others. It is the holiday season. I think we've kind of all gotten a little tired of this. I understand, but let's remember that, you know, there's humility in humanity, and try and treat each other with a little more respect. You know, on the highways, be a little nicer. Don't ride up people's butts on their bumpers. It's been crazy out there. You know, slow down, take a breath, think about what's really going on and who's really affected by your actions, and how you can just help us all get through this and really enjoy what's left of 2021 and really, really work on enjoying 2022. So again, Merry Christmas. Thank you, everyone, for listening to me doing this, but it really has been eating at me. Have a great Christmas, Happy New Year. Thank you.
Well said. Alderman Johnson?
Thank you, sir. Tommy Burr, most of our interactions have been at this room, but I always think of you as a straight shooter who keeps it simple, and that's a very good combination of characteristics, so I thank you for that. Legislative committee met this evening. We put forth a lot of quality of life issues, including the cannabis smoking resolution. They will come before the board at the first full meeting, the second meeting in January, not the reorg meeting. Main Street opening up, thank you, thank you, from the Third Ward. Pine Street in before Christmas, thank you, thank you, for CDA. And I'm going to follow in my colleagues' footsteps. I think I'm safe in saying I'm the only guy at the table that took graduate courses called virology and epidemiology, but correct me if I'm wrong. Not that I remember all of it, because it was 45 years ago, but it's still there. And I think I'm going to offer you a public service announcement on behalf of COVID. As COVID looks back on the last two years, it has a lot to be thankful for. It started off very inconspicuously, and fortunately for COVID, it went almost worldwide before anybody even knew that it existed. Check success for COVID. COVID is also fortunate. It happens to be a virus, and viruses can change their DNA, not exactly at will, but as needed. If humans could change our DNA, what a wonderful world it might be, but COVID can. When you take a virology or epidemiology course, you're introduced to the term naive host. So a naive host is a host in the herd who has neither seen your DNA by natural infection or by inoculation. So COVID is thankful that there's still a very good supply of naive hosts in the population, both in our country and worldwide. When a virus morphs, it's statistically more likely to get better than get worse. So when you think about what's being put in the press about Omicron, less virulent, but more transmissible. When you're a virus, you don't want all your hosts to die because then you have no place to live, but you do want to have an endless supply of naive hosts because it gives you a place to hang out, change your wardrobe, and move on. And the experts tell us that Omicron is 20% more transmissible. God knows how they figure that out, probably in a Petri dish, but I believe it to be true. So socio-politics aside, if you're a virologist, as long as you have a good supply of naive hosts, the virus will continue to prosper. The variants will continue to morph. The experts now say 2024. So those who are not vaccinated, that's your choice, but COVID thanks you. And those who don't wear a mask, that is a municipal choice for all of us. COVID thanks you. And I agree with Mr. Green. So far, December 13th is the best-kept secret in the month of December. And for businesses, one last thing, don't ask the entry-level employee to enforce this rule. You're management. You're a manager. You're the one who should be walking the floor of your store and saying, "Sir, madam, if you don't have a mask, we're going to have to ask you to leave." It's a very short conversation. I understand it can be very inflammatory, but that doesn't mean it shouldn't be had. And on that note, I wish you all a very Happy Christmas and a Merry New Year. Take care.
Alderman Cassoon?
Good evening. I just want to start by saying, Tom, it has been a pleasure working with you these last years, and it's going to be weird to not have you around. And I've learned a lot from you, and you've been here my entire tenure, and I just, I wish you all the best and all good things for you and family. As myself, and I'm sure Mr. McCormick can agree, those of us living on California Avenue are really excited about the opening of West Main Street tomorrow, more than anyone. And for everyone who lives in my neighborhood, thank you for being a good sport and muddling through with all of us. It has been crazy on a street that's looking like a highway and certainly isn't built to be one, but we all made it, and we're happy that, you know, we knew it had to be done. This is infrastructure, and you certainly don't want to wait for it to break. So we, we're happy it's done. We're happy we'll be able to go into the holiday with an open road. Our kids on buses, and I'm sure our bus company are thrilled with the two schools over there that need to get up and down that road really quickly. It's a big deal. So we, thank you, thank you, thank you for working so hard to get that to meet deadlines. As for that, I just want to say, you know, on behalf of Alderman Green and kind of echo their statements about all of this, we are all kind of dealing with this, and I know everyone's exhausted working in the schools, the kids are, the teachers are. We're all kind of maxed out these days in the last two years, but I think, you know, the most important thing we could have is a little kindness and understanding. As a parent, a member of the, of students in the district and kind of seeing the words that get traded online and things like that, there's a lot of real quick tempers and inflammatory words that get spoken out, and I think we all just need to be understanding that for the most part, everybody out here is just really trying to do their best and to keep everyone safe and to make it all work. And I think for the, for all the people that I know and work with in the district and the city and everywhere else, they are doing that. So my thanks to all of you, and Merry Christmas, happiest of New Years. See you on the 3rd.
Alderman Kleiner?
Thank you. I just first want to send my condolences to the Gerta family, Mike Gerta, Jr. We knew Mike Gerta, Sr., and Adele, our neighbors up in our, you know, Randle Heights neighborhood for many, many years. And, but as president of the Orange County Agricultural Society, state tennis champion, and all the things he did in his life, he... tennis champion, and all the things he did in his life, he will be missed, so I want to mention that first. The GMIC warming station, MiddletownWarmingStation.com, it's going to be a long winter, and always need volunteers, always need help, they're doing a great job, and new facilities from the city. Thank you Maria, thank you to the mayor, and anyone who pitched in, it's been a real 800,000 deaths, you know, Dave Bechtel, John Brian, I mean, I don't know what it takes to make a pandemic real, and you get tired of it, well, sure, we're tired, but you're dealing with a pandemic, you're dealing with a virus. And to echo what Alderman Johnson said, you know, this is, this is an example of evolution, and you find out the mutations, the little accidents that are not successful, they just disappear. The ones that have an accident that makes it more successful, like Omicron, well, it takes over. That's how evolution works, so we're getting a great demonstration of that, and we just all need to accept the reality of it, pitch in, think in terms of public health and not politics, and do the best you can to protect yourself and to protect everyone else. Thank you to Rick McCormick, our new City Clerk, who's just come on board and is doing an excellent job, I just want to recognize that. Tommy, I, I met in our first campaign, I just had to ask him to make sure I had the time right, but it was 2005 when he was running, and, you know, I'm a lifelong Democrat, he's a lifelong Republican, I went over and introduced myself and said, you know, if we're, if we both get elected and we're on the council, we'll be working together. And, and since then, there's been nobody who knows more about what's going on in the city than Tommy. He's always been willing to talk, he's always been willing to help, and, you know, I worked with Bill Burr at The Record, and so I had some history with the Burr family, but Tommy, you've been amazing, absolutely amazing, Alderman, and showing you what nonpartisanship and working together can really be. It's for the good of the city, and that constitution we take the oath to. And lastly, well, the good, the good news is, from here on out, the days get longer. We passed the winter solstice, but that means it is the start of winter, and so I do wish everyone, I hope everyone had a joyous Hanukkah, and I wish everyone Happy Holidays, Christmas, Kwanzaa, whatever you enjoy celebrating, and also Happy New Year. Every year we go, well, how could it possibly be worse, and then we find out. So we're hoping this year it gets better, so Happy Holidays to everyone, thank you.
Alderman Jean-François?
Yes, good evening. Alderman Burr, I consider you as a great friend over the years, and Alderman Kleiner, sir, I learned a lot from you, can't believe you've been here since 2005. I think you served the city well, and I still can't believe you're a Republican. I think you-
What?
I think you bleed Democrat. You know, Tom and I had many discussions, he reminds me, you know, the house I grew up in, we had Republicans, we had Democrat and Independent, and, and we used to have a discussion, and still able to move forward the next day like it's nothing. And Tom and I, you know, we agreed to disagree, and we never had a real disagreement, I think that's what the world needs today, you know, and I remember growing up, you know, you was proud to see you were Democrat or Republican, but nowadays I find people whispering, like, you know, and it's unbelievable, so, you know, it's been a pleasure. Many blessings to you and your family. Thank you, Tom.
Alderman Burr?
First, I'd like to thank everybody for their kind words, especially Commissioner To Will, my Parks and Rec buddies, that we've been together, especially me and Brink, 16 years, and it's always been a pleasure. It's been an honor and a pleasure to serve the, on the county council for the past 16 years. I'd like to thank the mayor, the council president, the Aldermans, past and present, because I went through quite a few Alderman in my day. I'd like to thank all the department heads for all their help, you know, making our job a lot easier. I'd like to thank the employees, the volunteers that volunteer on all our boards, and it's been a very fulfilling job here. I mean, the job that we do, you know, everybody says, "Oh, well, all we hear is aye, 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 aye." But what we accomplished in my time in 16 years, first started out with a water plant and a sewer plant, and within a year of each other. Thank, you know, we were here endless nights till 1 o'clock in the morning, this engineer, that engineer, this engineer, finally we got it done, and now everything, you know, under the leadership of the mayor, council president, and you guys, I mean, the accomplishments are unbelievable. I'd like to thank the Parks and Rec for their award tonight, very touching to me. I'd like to thank my wife, my kids, giving me the opportunity to serve, and wish everybody Happy Holidays, and my First Ward constituents, you know, give me eight terms, you know, it's, I appreciate that. And that's all I have. Thank you, Council President, and thank you all.
Tonight, as I was going back, I was like, all right, I got elected in 2003, 17 years, he's got 16 years, we went over 400 meetings together, never ever had we ever had an issue. Tom looked at me every time, was like, "We got to do what's right for the city." When we go to town meetings and county meetings, they're like, "How come Middletown always votes aye, 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 you guys never argue?" You see some of these town meetings, and they go on and on, and they fight. He's our only Republican, people don't even know who the Republicans and Democrats are in Middletown. We, you are a true gentleman, from born and raised in Middletown to, to owning a business. Tom Market is the best sub's in town, so I just want to put out a plug for him and keep supporting him. He's a staple in, in our city, and as an Alderman and council president, Tom has always looked at me, and sometimes in that room, and says, "This is how I'm going to vote, because it's right by the city of Middletown." Never, ever played politics, and that's, to me, is a true gentleman in my book, and I thank, I thank you for your service, and I'm going to miss you, but maybe 2024 I'll come down to Florida and hang out with you, but not now. Going back to the mask mandate and the COVID, I am the only person, my department in the hospital, I work for the hospital, I enter every single patient that comes into the hospital, on all three hospitals. If you're positive and you get admitted, you go through my department. Today, this morning, 6 o'clock in the morning, I'm trying to stay in bed, I look over, 19 new admissions. It is getting out of control again. So when people are, don't want to wear a mask, or don't want to get their vaccine or anything, just remember that there are healthcare employees out there who are doing a job. We are open 24/7, we are seeing the ICUs, I think I have five ICU beds available. It's tough, it's hard, and it's tough for everyone working in healthcare. When everybody's having these parties, get-togethers, Thanksgiving, Christmas, and you're okay, and don't have to wear a mask, and whatever, but then you're coming in, and we're seeing it. And we're seeing it, and it's hitting our community, city of Middletown, almost 30,000 people, it's hitting our community hard. So a mask does work, I hate it, I hate wearing my mask, but it does work, washing your hands, staying away, if you're sick, if you're not feeling well, stay home, you know, call out, you have sick time, and it's tough to see everything. We are burnt at the hospital, it's, we had the mandate in September, now we have, now we have this, we're on our fourth wave. It's tough, and, and, and everybody's saying it's not fair, senior citizens, I can't get the shot, it's not fair to young kids, new infants, it's tough. And, you know, talk to each other, remember during the holidays, yes, hug your family and everybody, but also, please, think about the other people that are out there, who are, our doors are always open at the hospital. Thank you. New business.
Good evening. We have a resolution sponsored by Alderman Burr to reallocate a $245 donation for supplies for the FERIL CAP program.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Burr, seconded by Alderman Green. Any discussion? Roll.
Ram Cassoon?
Aye.
Tobin?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Jean-François?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Motion carries. We have a resolution sponsored by Alderman Burr to authorize the treasurer to transfer $3,420 from within the city clerk's 2021 budget to cover the printing costs for the overnight and vacation parking permits.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Burr, seconded by Alderman Jean-François. Any discussion? Roll.
Ram Cassoon?
Aye.
Tobin?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Jean-François?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Motion carries. We have a resolution sponsored by Alderman Burr to authorize the mayor to sign a contract with the Humane Society of Port Jervis.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Burr, seconded by Alderman Kleiner. Any discussion? Roll.
Ram Cassoon?
Aye.
Tobin?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Jean-François?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Motion carries. We have a resolution sponsored by Alderman Burr to approve the policies and procedures for elected officials, department heads, and employees of the city of Middletown.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Burr, seconded by Alderman Reckleson. Any discussion? Roll.
Ram Cassoon?
Aye.
Tobin?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Jean-François?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Motion carries. We have a resolution sponsored by Alderman Burr to approve the assessment collector's warrant for 2022.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Burr, seconded by Alderman Tobin. Any discussion? Roll.
Ram Cassoon?
Aye.
Tobin?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Jean-François?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Motion carries. We have a resolution sponsored by Alderman Burr to authorize the treasurer, treasurer to transfer $12,000 within the DPW 2021 budget to cover overtime.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Burr, seconded by Alderman Kleiner. Any discussion? Roll.
Ram Cassoon?
Aye.
Tobin?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Jean-François?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Motion carries. We have a resolution sponsored by Alderman Burr to authorize the mayor to sign a proposal with JCO Inc. to provide the management services and act as chief operator of the water treatment plant.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Burr, seconded by Alderman Green. Any discussion? Roll.
Ram Cassoon?
Aye.
Tobin?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Jean-François?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Motion carries. We have a resolution sponsored by Alderman Burr to add a yield sign to Vincent Drive.
Resolution by Alderman Burr, seconded by Alderman Jean-François. Any discussion? Roll.
Ram Cassoon?
Aye.
Tobin?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Jean-François?
Aye.
Burr?
Green? Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Motion carries. We have a resolution sponsored by Alderman Burr to add a stop sign at the intersection of Cottage Street and Vincent Drive.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Burr, seconded by Alderman Tobin. Any discussion? Roll.
Ram Cassoon?
Aye.
Tobin?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Jean-François?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Rodriguez?
Aye.
Motion carries. We have a resolution sponsored by Alderman Burr to authorize the mayor to sign a contract with Miracle Recreation Equipment Company for playground equipment.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Burr, seconded by Alderman Kleiner. Any discussion? Roll.
Ram Cassoon?
Aye.
Tobin?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Jean-François?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Motion carries. We have a resolution sponsored by Alderman Burr to author, to accept a donation of $220 from Astro Heating and Air for two camp scholarships.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Burr, seconded by Alderman Jean-François. Any discussion? Roll.
Ram Cassoon?
Aye.
Tobin?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Jean-François?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Motion carries. We have a resolution sponsored by Alderman Burr to authorize the treasurer to transfer $42,500 within the 2021 Parks and Recreation budget.